Roll call please, Mr. Carrati. Can you hear me?
Ms. Arcomando.
Present.
Ms. Boralley. Mr. Ocello.
Present.
Ms. Inello.
Present.
Mr. Laurentino.
Present.
Ms. Roloff.
Here.
Ms. Torvik.
Present.
Mr. Verson.
Here.
Ms. Zatterelli.
Here.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Take two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Okay, can we start off with the student representatives' report?
Okay, good. Okay, we're gonna start off with Washington School. This week, Washington is celebrating the Week of Respect, focusing on being a good friend and what it means to be respectful and kind. Okay, and they have their centennial celebration this Thursday. Phase two of their playground project was also completed this week, and the students are beyond excited to get to play on the new equipment. And lastly, it's also Fire Prevention Week, so that will be a topic of instruction as well in the preschool classes.
Okay, this week Franklin School hosted a successful fire drill at the Saddlebrook Fire Department. The drill went very smoothly, and they worked closely with the department to evaluate their safety protocols. And on Hispanic Heritage Month and Week of Respect, the staff has been conducting activities related to these in the classrooms and in the morning announcements.
Now for Smith School. Smith would like to thank all of the parents who made it to back-to-school night event. They loved meeting all the parents and the students, who were thrilled to prepare items for the parents to check out while learning about the upcoming year. Currently, Smith School is in the middle of the Fall Book Fair. Smith would like to express a big thank you to the PTO and Ms. Murphy for making this a huge success in their newly upgraded media center. Last Friday, the PTO hosted their annual Fall Fest. They couldn't do these fun events without their PTO and appreciate all of their planning and hard work. This coming week, Smith's students are focused on learning the Week of Respect and participating in activities and discussions about being a good friend. Don't hesitate to ask your child about how to be a good friend and our Smith motto. Finally, Smith's students did a great job during their fire drill with the Fire Department. Smith would like to thank the Saddlebrook Fire Department for the extra time to show the youngest students around the trucks and teaching them about fire prevention.
Okay, October was a busy month for Long School. This week, Long School is commemorating both Week of Respect and Fire Prevention Week. Again, the Saddlebrook Fire Department visited the school, observing their fire drill and conducting informative tours of their fire drills for the kindergarten and first-grade students. To foster a respectful learning environment, the school counselors leading lessons on respect and anti-bullying in all classrooms. And additionally, they are creating a collaborative school project decorating a sun with rays that represents ways to radiate respect throughout their building. In celebration of Unity Day this month, students are participating in a Chalk the Walk activity, writing inspirational messages with a peer leader. And lastly, Long School is engaging in various activities throughout Red Ribbon Week to promote a healthy and drug-free lifestyle.
Okay, and now for the middle school. The middle school is very excited to announce that there's a winner of their eighth-grade trip vote, and it's Rocking Horse Ranch. The students were given the option of Historical Philadelphia Walking Tour, Rocking Horse Ranch, Spirit of New York Lunch Cuisine, or no preference. Ms. Sharp and Ms. Summers are finalizing all the details, and the students have already started fundraising for the event.
Okay, for the high school, the guidance counselors hosted weekly lunch and learns to help the seniors with common act processes. The environmental club successfully did a courtyard cleanup where it looks the best it has in probably years. The area looks spotless, and the high school would like to thank everyone who participated. School spirit was at an all-time high during the Week of Homecoming. High schoolers participated in Spirit Week, and the football team won their homecoming game. And of course, the homecoming dance was an immense success. Students had access to lively music, a photo booth, cotton candy, even a candy truck. On October 23rd, all ninth and 12th graders will have a delayed opening due to the PSAT testing. There was a successful fire drill yesterday, October 8th, during eighth period, and the juniors will have their class breakfast this Friday, October 11th.
Lastly, for information regarding sports, on Tuesday, October 8th, four of the junior athletes, Gabby Bruce, Nicholas Vidiallo, Blake Glinius, and Martin Topinski, attended the First Annual NJIC Sportsmanship Code of Conduct Summit held at New Milford High School. There were various speakers and activities that our students took part in that stress the importance and the expectation of what good sportsmanship looks like. These student athletes attended are required to represent the information learned during the summit to their respective teams. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're gonna go to the superintendent's report, Ms. Vialletti.
Thank you. All right, so what we're going to do this evening is I will give my updates, Mr. Carrati will give his updates, then we're going to honor our two exemplary Falcons that are present tonight with their families. Thank you for being here. We'll take some photos. You can, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to head out. We have Mrs. Jenkins is going to do our testing presentation, and then after that, we'll continue with our agenda. So for me, again, I just want to reiterate some of the items our students touched upon. The courtyard here, our students use it throughout the day, and they really did a great job beautifying it. We also were accepted with the COPS grant, so what that was, a school safety grant. So with those funds, we are able to purchase more cameras, additional cameras, in all of our buildings, visitor management, control, and some fob door access and things like that. So we're going to be scheduling a meeting, so that way we can figure out exactly what we're able to purchase with those funds, but it's for school safety and security. We do have Washington Centennial tomorrow. We have an RSVP form out there, we're up to 166 yeses. So what I thought would be quite a small celebration has really grown. We are excited because we do have Phase Two of the playground there. There's a communication board, there's a double slide, a balance beam, a little hut for the students to go through. So we'll be able to show that off. We have our middle school, high school band doing some songs, some light refreshments. We got a 100th birthday cake, and one of our paras is doing balloons for us. We'll share our history of the building. Our National Honor Society students, some of them spent their volunteer hours helping me out, and they put old photos that were given to me on trifolds, so those will be on display around the gym. And then we'll do some tours, and I know everyone that responded is just really excited to see some old friends and reconnect with one another. We also had for Fire Prevention Week, October's full of weeks, Week of Respect, Fire Prevention Week, there's a whole ton. So for fire prevention, our Fire Department visited every single building yesterday. They conducted their tours, they kinda just evaluate how our fire drills are completed in each of our buildings. I happened to be present for the Washington one, and as soon as the alarm went off, all you heard was tears and crying around the building. So I thanked them for that, but it wasn't naptime, so it was okay. They did a great job, and you know, they're very complimentary of our building administrators and how they're running their fire drills. It was a great day. The student representatives touched upon our eighth-grade trip. The notification was sent out to parents with the votes, so every student voted, and 70, oh gosh, I need eyeglasses, 74.6% voted for Rocking Horse Ranch, whereas 19.6% voted for Spirit of New York Lunch Cruise, and then a smaller percentage said no preference. And maybe one or two children chose Historical Philadelphia Walking Tour. Can't really see that line. So that's how they determined where they are going to go this year, and they're excited too. I know it's changed and it's tradition, and that part of it's very sad, but we are excited to have a trip that all of our students are able to participate in. We also had an Office of Homeland Security visit, maybe about two weeks ago, where we had our district threat assessment team present with the OEM, the Fire Department, police representatives, and we all sat in the room together to talk about reunification drill. So there's two types, there's Level One and Level Two. A Level One reunification drill is when you have to evacuate due to a gas leak or something that's non-emergency, whereas a Level Two would be more like an active shooter. So with that, we started working as a community to determine how to reunify our students with their families, shell and events occur, and it's the beginning of the conversation. There's a lot more conversations that need to be had, but we were really happy that we were able to start that conversation up, and we are scheduling future meetings to solidify some of our plans. I wanted to send a reminder that our next Board of Ed meeting, when I was looking ahead at the calendar, is after that week off we have in November, so it is going to sneak up on us. We're off for that week, and then we have Monday, we have our caucus meeting, and Wednesday we have our executive meeting. And also Friday, next Friday, October 18th, I'm going to do a communication test. So in the event of an emergency, we want to make sure that we can connect with all of our families. So it will be a text, a text message, a phone call, an email, and if you have the app, the app notification, it should all go out at one time, making sure that we have all the correct and updated contact information for our families. So I will be putting it out on social media, but if you can assist with spreading that word, Friday, October 18th, I'm aiming for 9:15 a.m., that's what my reminder is set to, for that to go out and make sure that everybody is receiving our alerts. The tricky part is, if they're not receiving it, they're not going to know about it. So that's why I'm really trying to get the word out there. My principals will help me with that as well, and making sure other families know that we are doing that communication test. All right, so at this time, Mr. Carrati, why don't you do your updates, and then we'll transition to the exemplary Falcons.
Through the chair, can I just, Washington School's at 5:00 p.m., correct?
Five o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, so referendum update. We finally have the flood hazard permit approved, and I do have the piece of paper here. It only took well over a year to get that, but we're on schedule now. Tonight's meeting, we're gonna have the approval of the contractor that will do the excavation work and installation of the lights, and get the field ready for the turf, and then the second action, the last one the budget finances, the company that will be installing the field turf, the synthetic turf. So we're looking for that project to probably start early December. We'll get a date, hopefully I'll have an update at next board meeting. At Coolidge School, where the board offices are gonna be removing too, renovations are progressing, She-Rock is up on the main floor, and the lower level is being, the studs and the rooms built out. The part that's gonna take the longest is the elevator, but we expect the construction, most of it, to be done by end of November, early December. Washington School, we renovated three rooms on the second floor with one contractor. They installed new bathrooms, and those rooms are up and running by our little three- and four-year-old Falcons. The fourth room, and the elevator was done by another company, that room is currently ready but unoccupied, and the elevator is tentatively scheduled for delivery in the next few days or week, and they'll start erecting the elevator. The shaft is all built, but they'll start building the elevator box that should take probably a month or a little bit more, so hopefully by December, the elevator is up and running. Washington School, the roof, the shingled roof, which is the 100-year-old section of the school, is complete. They only have to remove and install the new gutters, that's projected to be done on Saturday. At Washington also, there's the areas of the school that were built in 1952, where the two wings coming out, that's got flat roofs. Those rooms were redone and recoded for a 20-year life. We also did the roof areas at the middle school, high school, and they're working on, currently working on Smith School. I mentioned to you previously, Franklin and Long, the sections we're gonna be doing have solar panels, they need to be removed, the work to be done on the roof, and then put the panels back on, and we're gonna be doing that work in the summer. And we're also gonna start preparing for bids for the ceiling and lighting upgrades at Washington School, probably the next few months to be done in the summer, and also... The boiler. Yeah, then that was all the referendum work. The other grant we applied for is School Development Authority, or ROD grants, you might hear them be called, regular operating district grants, for boiler replacements and HVAC replacements. We're currently working on the boilers first, so we're hoping to have that bidding out soon and get awarded, because they take several months to fabricate, and they'll be installed probably in the summer. Most of the schools have one boiler, some have two or three, but we should, we'll be got our boilers systems in all the schools up to date. And my last item is the, for the board, which is also on tonight for the workshops, is the school board workshop will be held October 21st through the 24th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Test, it works. Okay, so at this point, what we are going to do is sort of acknowledge two of our students that are present today with their families for being exemplary Falcons. So in the past, what, if I could share with the board, what we've done in the past is at the high school, is they've been doing Falcon of the Week. They do Falcon of the Week at the middle school, and they continued at the high school, but a lot of the times, the students really weren't fully into it. So we brainstormed as a team, and we decided to do something a little bit more special for our high school students that are exemplary Falcons, because as we spoke about at the beginning of the year, Falcons have a strong vision, they're focused, they're ambitious, and that kind of exemplifies our students that are present this evening. So what we did was, we actually just shared out a form, and our staff kind of put, they nominated our students. So we have three. One couldn't make it tonight, Ashley Osaro, so we'll invite her to our future meeting. So we have two present tonight. We have Manbeer Cowherd, and we have Colin Taylor. So what we did was, we shared it out with all of the staff, and all I'm going to do is read what staff has shared about you two. So I'm gonna start with Manbeer. Manbeer, staff has shared that you are an incredible student, you're always sharp and willing to learn more, hungry for knowledge, not afraid to show what you know, very imaginative and very easy to communicate with. You soared as a New Jersey, as a high school president in ninth grade. You kept the entire club on track and committed to completing all of their service hours. You embody character, scholarship, leadership, and service. In 10th grade, Manbeer served as an alumni advisor for the high school and was the driving force behind several service projects and exemplified what it means to be a leader. Another staff member said that she had the pleasure of having Manbeer in ninth grade honors English. Not only is Manbeer an excellent student, she's also an exceptional individual. She always enhanced the class discussion with an insightfulness that had the class engaging with our topics with a new level of depth. Manbeer also served as class officer for the class of 2026 during her sophomore year, and as class officer, she assisted with class fundraising and helped the class have a successful year. In fourth grade, Manbeer was always positive, reflective, and kind. I remember that she always wore a huge smile complimenting her gracefulness. She consistently thought critically about topics making her successful academically. Also, Manbeer was always very sweet thinking of others. I am not surprised that she's being recognized as an exceptional Falcon. I was lucky to be her teacher, and I'm proud of her. Last year, Manbeer approached the staff member about bringing DECA to the high school. I exclaimed that we already had FBLA, and we'd have to make a case that DECA is very different. She proceeded to put together a presentation, and she met with Mr. Maish on her own to start testing her willingness and leadership, and at some point, this staff member had to meet with our director of curriculum, since DECA is a very curriculum-specific program, and you carried yourself the same as any of our staff members would do so, and the teacher was extremely proud of you. I actually did not realize that DECA came from you, so thank you. But it is a recent decision on her part that has me the most impressed. In her early years at the high school, Manbeer ran and was involved with the class of 2026. Last year, she served as co-president of the student council. She was all set to run again this year, her junior year, but when DECA was approved, Manbeer immediately took her name out of the running. Rather than just have another thing for her transcript, she pivoted immediately to DECA, making interest flyers and preparing a Google Classroom. This staff member said that she's had you for a few classes, and you're not, she wasn't surprised that you made the list, but your ability to manage and prioritize your own time makes you beyond your years and a model student. I've known Manbeer, a different staff member, I've known Manbeer for about three weeks now, and it's been enough to truly understand what a great person she is. She's extremely hardworking and diligent in completing all of her assignments. She is extremely insightful and sets a tremendous example of what an AP student should be. She has a passion for learning, and her kindness is infectious. She's a wonderful young woman. I had the pleasure of having Manbeer last year in my Spanish IIIH and this year in Spanish IV honors. Aside from being an absolute joy to have in class, her classroom demeanor and work are exemplary. She is an exceptional student who consistently demonstrates a passion and love for learning. She is an incredible dedicated person, always willing to help other students, and always with a smile. So Manbeer, I invite you down here, and I have a Falcon of the Week shirt for you. All right, thank you. Next, we have Colin Taylor. All right, Colin, so all the staff members, what did they have to say about you? Colin is truly respectful, acts like a leader, just to name a few traits, a hard-working student who puts his all into everything he does. Colin is always encouraging his peers, both in class and on the field. He is consistently checking in with his teammates and fellow classmates to make sure everyone is feeling and doing well, both a leader on and off the field. Colin is an honest, hard-working person. He will go out of his way to do anything for you. Colin is actually, actually very funny also. He is definitely a well-rounded person, who should be recognized for being such a good-natured person. There is never a time he passes in the hallway without saying hello and checking in with you. And even when you came in today, you came right over, you said hello, and you shook my hand, very respectful. Colin is also a three-sport varsity athlete, plays football, basketball, and baseball, and he's a leader both on and off the field. I was lucky also to have Colin in grade four. Not only was he an outstanding student who gave his best all the time and loved a good math challenge, he was also a wonderful role model for the rest of the students. He was always a team player and a friend to all. In addition, Colin had a terrific sense of humor, which made everyone smile, especially this teacher. He himself always had a smile on his face. Each year, this teacher attends middle school, high school graduation, and when you saw the staff member, you came running over and gave her the biggest hug. He was so appreciative that I attended the ceremony. I still have a picture of me, Colin, and Melody that I was always cherished. Another staff member said that Colin is an amazing all-around person. I can't remember the last time he wasn't in a good mood or had a smile on his face. Whenever you pass him in the hallway, he always gives a big smile and says, "Hey, how are you?", and genuinely cares about your answer. Colin sets goals for himself and works hard to achieve them. Along the way, he also encourages his classmates and teammates to work to their best ability. He has often been heard saying "chin up" when a classmate makes a mistake, encouraging them to try again. Colin is truly deserving of this recognition. This other staff member said that she had you in seventh grade and now again in 10th grade. Everyone loves Colin, but it's how he uses his popularity that makes him special. He is aware that he is modeling good behavior, and he's not fake about it. I credit his parents, as he always greets teachers and wishes us well upon leaving. I teach lots of young men, who if I said, "Hey, can you hold the door for me? I've got these heavy books," they would gladly, but it's a rare to encounter someone like Colin, who sees you coming, assesses the situation, and takes initiative. Colin Taylor is one of the most genuinely kind students I have had the opportunity to work with. Not only does he always have a smile on his face, but he is always able to make everyone he interacts with smile. I had the pleasure of having Colin during his freshman year in Saddlebrook. He is both a responsible and respectful student, but more importantly, he is considerate of everyone he interacts with and works to make wherever he is a better place to be, and this is very rare to find. So Colin, congratulations on earning this exemplary Falcon Award. All right. At this time, if our family's welcome to say your question presentation, you're welcome to go home and do homework. At this time, I'm going to invite our board members to transition to the chairs while Mrs. Jenkins sets up the screen for the testing presentation. Thank you.
Gee, this is what you're gonna see, right? Michael, didn't you have hip replacement? What's happening?
Oh, okay.
No.
Before we begin, I just want to thank our staff members who took the time to share these special thoughts about our students. You know, this is the first time we're doing it, so hopefully it'll catch on. More staff members will share stories about our students, we'll be able to honor more of our high school students here at our board meeting. So we're excited to start that up. We're just waiting for three more board members. I'll start with introductions. So Mrs. Jenkins is our Director of Student Data Research and Evaluation? Planning?
Planning.
Planning, research, and evaluation. It's a tricky one. And part of her responsibilities is putting together this presentation on our testing, so she's going to share with you the NJSLA results, and then Mrs. DeBona's unable to make it this evening, so she's also gonna share the Access4Ls. And the NJGPA, because we did it over the summer, so we do a quick recap.
Okay, we're gonna get started. So tonight, we're gonna first kick off a conversation with you regarding our results for NJSLA and talk about DLM. And what I want you to concentrate on as we do this, I did this with the board over the summer about NJGPA, we're gonna review that again for the community, but whenever we talk about student data and test results, I want you to think in the terms of how does that data tell a story, and how does that data show if our interventions with students are bearing the fruit that we hope that it would? That's not working. Not working. Okay, so about 1% of our students take an alternative test called Dynamic Learning Maps. The data set for Dynamic Learning Maps is so small that it's under the threshold of data that we share with the district, but I do have a slide to talk a little bit more about what that is. Then we're gonna talk about NJSLA, ELA Math and Science results, and we're gonna look at that through the, in terms of the district, our schools, and demographic analysis. There is tons of data in these slides, and I'm not, I'm just gonna be honest, there's 106 slides. But we are not gonna go through 106 slides, because we put them on the assessment website, that we have a Google site in the district for all of that, but I'm gonna go over what the data tells as a story. Then we're gonna talk about Access4Ls. Access4Ls is the assessment data that we look at for ELL students, our English Language Learners, and then we're gonna review the NJGPA results one more time. So Tony can advance that slide for me? I would've thought you still had it? Okay. So the DLM is an assessment for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. These tend to be some of our students who are placed in specialized programs, whether in district or out of district, but like I said, this is under 1% of our population that participates in this, and it's an alternative assessment to NJSLA. NJSLA, this slide is just a little, gives you a little bit of an overview. It's administered in grades three through nine. NJSLA for ELA and math, that's three through eight. Once we hit eighth grade, some of our students may take algebra, so they would take an algebra assessment as eighth graders, but we also have ninth graders who take algebra assessments, and we could also have ninth graders who take a geometry assessment. Which assessment you take in math as you move into eighth grade and into high school all depends on the math class that you're enrolled in. all depends on the math class that you're enrolled in. And then our students are assessed in science in grades five, seven, five, eight, and 11. And what we're now gonna see this year is that we're starting to get three-year trends of analysis because if you remember, we started to implement NJSLA post-pandemic again in 2022, so now we have three years' worth of data. So here are some of our notable achievements, and this is where I said I want you to remember to think that data tells a story. We are starting to see a trending decrease in students scoring two or lower in grade six by double-digit numbers. This is amazing. This is, so we have 19.3% of our students who are scoring less in this lower category than we have had in the past. And conversely, we also are seeing a 20.6% increase in achievement with our sixth graders who are scoring four or better. Now, you should say, I would ask as a parent, I would say, "What did you do? That is double-digit achievement. What happened?" So what happened in 2024 to make that happen? And this is really just a one-year difference. So it's pretty significant. And what I will tell you is that in the beginning of last year, we talked to you about making some changes in our master schedules, and in sixth grade, we doubled down on the minutes of instruction in math. So we doubled our instruction in math, and we got double-digit increases in performance and achievement, and double-digit decreases in the lower achievement levels. This is really significant data. We're really, really proud of this. This reflects the work that our elementary school principals and our elementary school teachers do with their students, in concert with efforts led by Mrs. DeBonis. We're super proud of this. And then we also see in ELA that the district is outpacing that rebound over time in these grades that I listed above, four, five, six, eight, and nine. We also know that for Saddle Brook, a transition year is for middle school for us, happens to be grade seven, so sometimes you might not see, sometimes you see a little bit of a drag in data when kids are going from one school to another, but that is still a great rebound over time, and we're outpacing the state. We also see an overall increase in students achieving a four or better in ELA district-wide by 5.3%. If we think about the district goals and how we wrote the district goals this year, and the boards work on that with Mrs. Violetti, we have, we have set a goal to increase that by similar numbers for next year, and you could see we were already on the right path for that. And then in terms of math, we also saw that double down here in math in, as 21.7. And as we were working in departmentalization, I was talking about ELA before, but all of that has led to great, great scores for our sixth graders. And then overall, our students achieving four or better in math district-wide was also up by 5.8%. Okay. So in science, in science, our students, we also see a decrease in students scoring a two or lower in grade 11 science, also by double digits, 19.2%, as opposed to the state. The state's decrease in students scoring a two or lower was just a negative 1.8%. So we're outpacing, as we're helping students improve their scores, we're also outpacing that type of achievement and that growth from the state. We're also outpacing the state's average growth in science, specifically, these numbers, I think, are pretty telling. So in grade eight, we saw our students were growing at 8.6%, and the state average was 0.2. And then in grade 11, we saw once again a double-digit 19.2, and that state average growth was 1.8. I'm so, so proud. I'm so, so proud of our teachers. I'm so, so proud of our students and all of the effort for professional development. And you see an overall increase in students' achievement four or better in science, like district-wide, 9.0. Now, we know we had a lot of room for growth, but we also wanna see that this is steady and we repeat it again and again. So now we, I also mentioned like three years' worth of data. So I looked at the data comparing where were we in 2022 and where are we now with spring 2024 achievement, and I wanted to look at that as subgroup data by gender and then by ethnicity or by service program, economically disadvantaged. These next few slides will have data type, that type of data. And if you remember, as a board member in the summer when we looked at NJGPA, this is where in the subgroup data, we were really blown away in the increases over time. And here you see with NJSLA, when you, when you really drizzle it down, nail it down and to the subgroups, this is where you see big double-digit gains as well. So for the all females, we have 7.8% scoring at a level five exceeding standards compared to 22 to 24. And the all males averages at a level five, up 6.8%. Middle school boys, so this is the six through eight age group, is up 6.3. Our high school girls at grade nine at a level five, up 32.2%. Wow. Big jump. And all students, three through nine, a level five, scoring at a level five, up 7.8%. Now, what I know, because I see the work that Mrs. DeBonis is doing, when she has the teachers come in and look at evidence statement analysis and really looking at which specific standards do our students need to grow in based upon test result, they spent a lot of time doing that last year, and you see the reward and the benefit because that data helps inform our instruction. You also see this by math, by gender, you see female levels four and five increasing 8.9%. Middle school boys in sixth through eighth grade increases to level in four, four and five at 10.6%. And high school ninth grade, level four and five, increasing 18.8%. And then on subgroups in science, you're gonna see some double digits here. Our fifth grade females proficient increasing to 8.7, eighth grade boys up 16.8. I highlighted all the double digits because I just wanted it to pop for your eyes. And grade 11 boys proficiency increases to 22.3%. I think there's a lot to be proud of there. And then you're gonna see it here within some of our demographic groups. Like I said earlier, I just want you to remember that when we have a demographic group that has less than 10 students, we're not allowed to report on it. We have that data, but, so you're gonna see where I'm sharing data. It's where we have, I compiled the numbers together to have some data to share with you. So for all grades, of all of our grades for ELL learners, we have a decrease of students scoring one and two by 9%. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the work that was done with our teachers and our students to support that. And then all grades, special education, level one and two, a decrease of, we're down 4.5%. And all grades, special ed, level five, an increase to four, by 4.6%. And then in grade nine, our economically disadvantaged students scoring, increasing levels to four and five, 28.5% double-digit increases as well. And then in math, you'll see grades three and five, economically disadvantaged, level four increases 10.8. Grade six through eight, special education, level four increases 6.5. And then grade nine, economically disadvantaged, level four increases 5.3. And I, you know, I make mention of these where we see five and six because that was what we sort of were projecting as potential growth, but we're seeing for our subgroups, some of them are even much higher. And then for science, you'll see grade five, special education students increasing to, by 15.4%. Grade eight, special education students, increasing 12.1. Grade 11, special ed, increasing 5.1. And then all grades, grades five, eight, and 11, increasing collectively 12.4. So still double-digit growth. And here are some of the things that we know contributed to those things and some of the things I think we should be celebrating. So we increased instructional time in math for grade six, and we saw big results. We talked about, I started that, doubling our minutes of instruction during 23, 24 school year. Our faculty members worked together on evidence statement analysis during professional development time, and it had huge impacts, and it's most evident, I think, in science. And using New Jersey Tiered Sisters of the Port and our school data teams to provide targeted instruction. Mrs. DeBonis worked on a lot of curriculum, new curriculum guides and aligning that to the new standards. We also received school Title I funding services at Franklin. These were school-wide services, so this helps our targeted populations, and this really began in 23, 24. We increased student achievement at NJ, our increased student achievement, NJSLA testing was aligned to district goals, and we've aligned that to our professional development plans for our teachers this year. So the goals that you saw written as board members for district goals have been connected to the teachers' professional development plans. And then we've also done additional training in IRNS. Curriculum shifts for K-2 ELA occurred last year. We're also extended Amplify into grade three for 24, 25. And we've done a lot of Google Apps for Education work to support our teachers at the middle school, high school, and professional development. Mrs. DeBonis worked with our ELL teachers, and then they developed these fingertip files that we call for all content area teachers, so they all know exactly what their ELL learners have as goals, and they can use that in their planning. We've had Conquer Math PD, Science of Reading Training, M-Class Progress Monitoring as a Tool for Reading, our school data teams work, and obviously, all of our focus on SEL to support the wellness of our students. And then if you look through these extra slides, this is where I know board members like to see data charts, and I know that's always small up on the screen, that's why I put it on the website for you guys to be able to go back and look at. But this is where you start to see charts and the data jump, jump, jump. So this is all going to look like very busy charts and data, and not exactly all that pretty, but I know you like the graphs. And then you'll see it, you can come into section two, and you'll see it by school, and you could compare the achievement of one school to another. And then all of the demographic data eventually will be at the bottom. I mentioned the difference between grade eight students, some take algebra, some take math eight, so you'll see differences in that. So I'm not gonna click through all of those tiny printed slides, it's hard for you to see, but we are gonna take a break from Mrs. Jenkins talking. Mrs. Violetti's gonna help me out as we shift, we're gonna talk to Access for Ls.
Okay. So while Mrs. Jenkins pulls that up, you see the growth. You see, we had room for growth, so the growth is great, but we need to continue that momentum. What we're doing here, what our staff is doing, is not, I don't feel very well-reflected in the test score. So we're really focusing on these assessments. We are really doing a lot as a district. Our school data teams are meeting at least monthly. They're actually analyzing the student data. They are looking at the NJSLA performance, they're looking at the Lincoln assessments. They can tie, each question is attached to a standard, so they can see as a, like as a class, you could see which standards this class is struggling with, and that way our teachers can then work on those standards with the students that are struggling. So when we talk about our school data teams, they are doing a lot of hard, difficult, tedious work, and then they're sharing it. The goal is for them to share it with the teachers, so that way they know which standards to really focus on with their groups of students. So I really commend them all, that we're doing a lot, and our goal, as you know, in our District Improvement Plan, is to really increase our test scores, so we have to continue this momentum because what we're doing here is absolutely amazing, and other districts want to know what we're doing. And I just want it to be reflective in these data assessments. So we're really working harder on this, and I thank our leadership team, I thank our staff, because they are working extremely hard to achieve this goal.
And some of our professional development time on Monday is also gonna be dedicated to that. So the Access for Ls is an assessment that is given by our ELL teachers each year. Hold on. Okay. I need glasses, too. This one isn't, this one's a PDF, so it's harder to, yep. So this is a sample score report. You're obviously gonna be able to see this better if you look on the website. This is also already posted up there. We posted this today. And we had 76 students participate in Access for Ls. They take this in about February or March each year, and we had 100% of our students Yeah, let it reload. There we go. And there's also very similar data charts here for you, too. You could see the percentage of our students that are scoring at entering, emerging, and developing, and students that are expanding, and you could see as these students move through the continuum. So we would expect to see our ELL learners scoring sort of on the lower end of this scale at this time because they were new to the, you know, new to the country, first and second year students as ELL learners, and then eventually, as they achieve success here, well, you know, what happens is you see them exit the program.
What I would like to say is we saw that, I think, one of the highest numbers in our years here of students new to the country. So this actually is great. So in order to pass, quote-unquote "pass," to exit ESL, you need a 4.5 on this assessment. So our students are really, our teachers are working extremely well with their, with the student population, and Mrs. DeBonis created those fingertip sheets for our teachers to use in the content areas, so it really is working. That's what we're seeing here.
And then in addition to that, Mrs. DeBonis hosted Family Engagement Night events, and then obviously, these were the, some of the intervention strategies, some of which I talked about, the fingertip files. She also had professional development and training, introduced adaptive technology into our classrooms, and really supporting families through family engagement. Now we're gonna talk about NJGPA? Okay, so you know on the Fourth of July, when you're at the fireworks, and the really good ones come at the end? We save the best for last. Okay. Our board members saw this presentation in the summer because of reporting timelines that we have for the state, but the data was so exciting that we wanted to share it again for the public. Okay. So the NJGPA is the New Jersey Graduation Assessment. It's required. Our students take it during their junior year. They're assessed in English and mathematics. The minimum score to pass is a 725. And the math components are aligned to Algebra I and Geometry. And it has been since May of 2023 that we have had these standards. If you remember, the class of 2022 took this test. The cut score was 750. The state decided to waive it. For the class of 2024, it was the first year, it was an absolute requirement. The class of '24, we know, had a freshman year where they were remote primarily, so what you see for the class of '25 in the next slide is more of a typical four-year high school experience. Okay, so there's three different pathways to satisfy state testing requirements for the state of New Jersey. The first pathway is by passing the NJGPA with a 725. We strongly encourage all of our students to maximize their opportunities. This week, we're having NJGPA retakes for the students who didn't hit that 725, and it is amazing how many of our students were just so close, 720, 724. And we strongly encouraged them and supported them. Mr. Meish hosted with his teachers extra help review sessions, and they were taking, that was yesterday and today, and we'll continue through Friday with ELA. Students, if they do not pass the NJGPA, can consider a second pathway assessment. This could be an SAT, a PSAT, or something that we, that's called an Accuplacer. We do know we have students who already had second pathway scores. We have students who could have said, "Ah, forget it, I'm just gonna take my second pathway score." But no, I'm so proud of them, they decided to still try to pass through the first pathway, and they took it, took that test again. Should their first pathway assessment score on the retake not satisfy that 725, and they don't have a PSAT or an SAT score that passes them, we will issue them an Accuplacer test, and the Accuplacer is scheduled again in a small group with some reviews, and we give them a shot at that. And if the, if they are not successful, the third pathway is a portfolio assessment of actual work samples that's overseen by a teacher. We had many, many students this year who we already knew had a second pathway score with PSAT or SAT before they even took the NJGPA, so we were feeling really confident that they were gonna do well. So here are some of the intervention strategies that took place last year. We had school-wide funding, like we talked about earlier. We had a basic skills program up and operating in the high school, that was a new expansion. We made updates to master schedules. There was tons of curriculum analysis that was aligned to NJSLA revisions. Our teachers worked, like I said earlier, with Mrs. DeBonis on evidence statements, and they looked at exactly which standards. They looked at Lincoln data with our data teams, the work with our ELL students that we just mentioned with access. we just mentioned with access, and all of our wellness programs, our Conquer Math, all of these things combined, I think, to this achievement. It's the work of our teachers. It's our students taking the tests more seriously. And I think when our class of '25 saw the class of '24 really have to buckle down and meet those assessment standards, I think they went, walked into testing with the mindset that I'm going to, I'm going to knock this out. So here are some of their notable achievements. The class of 2025 cohort outperformed the state average in NJGPA, ELA, and math. We saw 50.7% growth in the district achieving passing in ELA from '23 to '25. We had our special education students outscored the state average in ELA and made great gains in both ELA and math. Our Hispanic students outscored the state average in ELA. In fact, the percentage of Hispanic students graduation-ready in ELA jumped from 70% for cohort '24 to 95% for cohort '25. I told you there were big fireworks at the end. Hispanic students' average score in ELA was 781, and it's on par with our white students' at 783, closing the achievement gap. Our NJGPA math achievement continues to outpace student average growth. In fact, the state held nearly flat in growth for, where Saddle Brook High School achieved 17% growth. That is tremendous. And in total, the class of 2025 cohort has 25 more students graduation-ready with a first pathway score than the cohort behind, that was ahead of them. And we closed the achievement gap in ELA and math for economically disadvantaged students and students with IEPs in ELA and math. This is, this slide actually just addresses that, how many of our students were assessed. And then this is a percentage that were considered graduation-ready in ELA. It was 93.2% in math, it's 69.6. We know we have work to do here. We also see that same work necessary through NJSLA data, and obviously, that projects up to grade 11. And, but when you look in comparison to the state, the state's graduation-ready averages were 54.7% in math and 81.6 in ELA. And then our graduation-ready as a, not ready as a district, was 6.8 in English and 30.4. And this is the population of students we're supporting with the NJGPA retake right now. Okay, so this is where you're going to see the fancy charts where the bar graph jumps. So this is the state average in 2022 at 39.4%. I know the font is tiny, but that's why you're going to look at it on the district website. And then this is the district average in, passing average in 2022. Remember, I said that the cut score was lowered to 725? So you are naturally going to see some jump here, but I think this is significant. This was for this, the spring '23. This is the '24 cohort. And then this is where you see the big jump in ELA for the class of 2025. I love watching trends like that. And then here we go again, same thing but for math. 2022, 2023, and then this is the class of 2025. So we know that there's room to grow here, but we also, we know we are growing. And then this is a table chart. This is like the raw data and the numbers. And then you can see by our performance by race. We're going to look at the difference between how do our Hispanic students and our white students perform. So this is 2022, 2023. You want to see a decrease in the not passing rate, right? These bars should go down, and now these ones are the ones you want to show going up, because this is the passing rate. So impressive. Really, work of teachers and students to be applauded. And then this is math, not passing. '22, '23, '24. You see the decrease that you're hoping to see. And then in '22, '23, '24, and you see the increase that you were hoping to see. And then by gender, this is always interesting. If our girls or boys outpace each other, you can see the decrease in not passing. And look at that little tiny blip at the bottom of the line for the class of 2025. And this is the passing rate, and how the passing rate grows phenomenally. It is just, and I, like we said, the difference between a four-year high school experience, the difference between teachers really drilling down on data, and the dedication of the kids to know that they're taking the test seriously, and it really counts. And then this is by gender in math. I think I might have went back a slide. And then economically disadvantaged. So this is our, this is the state average. I wanted you to see in this blue, greenish-blue color, the state averages for graduation-ready '23 to '24. So this would be graduation-ready for economically disadvantaged students in 2023, and you could see the jump for them. I said to you before, closing the achievement gap. Look at that jump. And then this would be our IEP students in '23, and our IEP students in 2024. And the, and what's unique here is we're not, remember, I said in 2022, the cut score's 750? This is comparing apples to apples. This is 725 compared to 725. And then this is our non-IEP students with another nice jump up. But that achievement gap, closing that achievement gap, is really impressive as well. And then you see where do we land with the same chart, but with math? Look at that jump for economically disadvantaged students in 2020 with the class of 2025. Our IEP students, this is like where you're going to see our IEP students were far behind the state average in 2023, but bam, there they are in 20, for the class of 2025. And then our non-IEP students. And that's what I call closing the achievement gap and getting closer and closer to, for that equity. And then I thought the board would like to see data regarding first pathway numbers. We know now, when you look at 2024 cohort here, that is a complete picture of a full school year of pathway work. So you can see that we had 100% of our students in the class of '24, graduation-ready by either the first pathway, second pathway, third pathway. You could see the actual numbers of how many students that was. And then you could also see the 2025 and where we're building. So the data here for second pathway is what we knew before we did the NJGPA retake this week. We knew for ELA, we had one student with a second pathway score at a 10, out of the 10. And with, for math, we knew we had 20 students out of the 45 were already walking into the NJGPA with a second pathway score. And the majority of them opted to try first pathway again, which is a source of great pride for all of us. And then these numbers will fill in as we move throughout the course of the year. And that is the NJGPA good news.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Any questions for Mrs. Jenkins from the board?
I think the 725 is going to stick.
Yeah. I think it sounds like they tried the 750 when across the state it didn't work out. All right, at this time, invite the board members to return to their seats. I thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, for all that information, and we will continue with our board meeting.
Oh, now I am.
Thank you so much for that. That was amazing. A lot of growth, yeah.
The information.
Michael, you happy?
Okay.
Yankees are tied 0-0.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to open up the meeting for public comment?
Second.
Okay. All in a, agree? Okay. Would anybody like to speak? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to close the meeting for public comment?
Second.
Okay. All agree? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to board action items. So we have B2425.14 through B2425.16. Any discussion? I'm sorry, can I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Hold on one second.
Sorry, I lost it.
I think so.
All good.
Okay. Point 1.5, that's our revised district improvement plan that I recently just spoke about. As I shared, we are working really hard as a district. We are seeing growth. We are excited about the momentum that we're building to continue with that growth. I commend our leadership team and our staff, our teachers, that are really looking at the student data, and we are working together to figure out how to move forward. They're really analyzing the student data, they're progress monitoring, they're doing all the right things. We're really excited to see what results we're going to have this coming school year. For point 1.6, that's the self-assessment for determining grades for HIBs. Each school building is mandated to complete a self-assessment on their HIB practices. So what that looks like is there's a rubric that's provided by the state. It has a bunch of core elements, talking about what programs you have to combat HIBs, any HIB training that you have, your HIB policy and procedures that the school follows, staff training programs, curriculum programs. So for example, right now, it's the Week of Respect. Every school building is tasked with completing HIB prevention programs with their students. Then every building has an anti-bullying specialist. So they go through, there's a rubric that they follow, and our scores are pretty well. We have Set Franklin School scored a 71. We have, this is Long School, also has a 71. They're all in their 70s, except for Washington School. Washington School does have the lowest, just because they have the fewest HIB activities that they do at their preschool building.
Thank you. Discussion? All good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Orecello?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes to all, but on B2425.14, I'll abstain from number one and number two.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes to everything except B2425.14, all three. I wasn't here.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain on B2425.14, one and two.
Mr. Akamando?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay. Education and curriculum, Ms. Traverso?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. E2425-2O through E2425-23.
Second. Sorry.
Any discussion?
For point 2O, our field trip list. You'll see the Senior Scholarship Banquet's going to be at the Barnyard and Carriage House again. We have some Latin Club trips on there, preschool trips, especially for the fall, going to the farms. We have some of our grade-level trips that are happening in the spring, and some music department trips, some special education trips into the community. We also have middle school grade seven field trip to see The Outsiders on Broadway, because they read The Outsiders, so they're very excited about that, about that trip. And our middle school, high school service learning club, they visit Washington School. I think they started that last year, maybe two years ago, so they're continuing with that. Also, under point 21, that's the revised grade three ELA curriculum. That's because it's now aligned to our Amplify program. We started Amplify K-2, and now we're continuing that with grade three this year, so that curriculum document was revised. Point 22 is delayed opening for PSAT testing. We find that it really helps the organization of our school building when we have a delayed opening for the students that are not taking the PSAT. And then point 23 is a co-op for our girls lacrosse. And the reason behind that was we have five to seven girls that are pretty passionate about playing lacrosse, and we don't have enough to have our own teams. So we did partner up with Garfield, that's what this is, so that way it gives our girls an opportunity to play lacrosse.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Orecello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik? Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Akamando?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain from E2425.23.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, budget and finance, Mr. Akamando?
Sure. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. BF2425.24 to BF2425.32.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Question, comment?
4.27, professional development. I just want to highlight that we are sending several of our staff members to, or in Gillingham, morphinology plus trade eggs. So we're excited. It's our reading specialists, it's our ESL teachers, and it focuses more on multi-sensory learning, especially for our students struggling in reading and writing.
All right. Roll call?
Mr. Orecello?
Yes to all, but on BF2425.27, I need to abstain from BOE2.
Mr. Laurentino?
Well, yes to all, but under BF2425.24, I'm going to abstain from checks 4902 and 5235. And under BF2425.27, there's no number listed for the superintendent there, but I'm have to abstain from her.
Wait, are you going to?
I don't.
No, 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 no. That's for the board.
No, Tony's on it also.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you catch that?
No.
He and I have to do that.
Okay.
There is no number, okay. Yes, I have it, okay.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes to all. I will abstain from BF2425.27, BOE4.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes to all, but I'll abstain from BF2425.27, BOE5.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes to all, but I will abstain from BF2425.27, BOE6.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes to all, but I'm abstaining from BF2425.27, BOE07.
Mr. Akamando?
Yes to all, except for BF2425.27, BOE01.
Ms. Borelli?
Borelli. Yes.
A little confused, anyway. Ms. Ainello?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain in BF2425.24. Check numbers 4826 and 5162. And then in BF2425.27, BOE3.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have now facilities and operations. Ms. Torvik?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. F2425.2 and F2425.3.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Good? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Orecello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Akamando?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay, negotiations. Ms. Adorelli?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following item. N2425.2.
Discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Orecello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli? Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamando?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, Mr. Laurentino?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. P two four two five dot two one through P two four two five dot two eight.
I need to.
Can I have a second?
Second.
For two four two five point two two, number four, I typed it in, we typed it in, it's not on the printed copy. It's a new appointment for executive assistant to the superintendent, to Joyce Byrne, last name Byrne, first name Joyce, salary is seventy-three thousand. And the approximate effective start date is November eighteenth, as Mrs. Galvin is leaving November fifteenth is her last day.
Okay, through the chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table on P two four two five dot two three, numbers one and nine, if I can, please.
Second.
So the motion on the table is to, a motion on the floor is to table items one and nine of P two four two five dot two three. So I'll go around and, you're going to vote to.
Wait a minute, we're, we're holding one through nine?
No, one and.
One and nine, okay.
ID one and, one and ID nine, the motion is to table those two items off the agenda.
Okay.
So that's the vote for, that'll be voted on first.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Can we discuss it? We can't.
I don't think they can discuss anything.
All right.
There's, there's no discussion needed if one is tabled.
No, I don't want to, no, I don't want to.
He wants to table it and speak about the person at a later time. Are you in favor of it or not, is what we're going to.
We're going to vote on that. We're going to vote, yeah, we're going to vote on tabling one and nine. Mr.?
Removing one and nine from the agenda.
We're voting right.
We're going to vote on that first, then we're going to remake your motion.
It's as if that was. Sorry, can we ask why?
No, we have to do it in close, that's why.
We're going to just do it just to poll the person. You're not saying yes or no to employment.
Yeah. I figured we'd do it.
Well, that's what we're going to discuss in close, so we would give Mike the opportunity to.
Through the chair, I have a question. When does that season start?
Thanksgiving.
Um, Thanksgiving, yes.
November?
Well, I'm going to say early, right before Thanksgiving will be tryouts. So are you asking, is it going to be cutting it close if, yeah. You would have to put that out, and you would have to try to hire someone. So if that, if that's what is ultimately what happens.
You're saying if it goes down?
If, correct, right. So my understanding right now is that it's being polled for discussion because.
Because.
That's the motion, right. Right, so then that's, I'm sorry. I would say if you, at that point, it's decided, then that is part of your discussion, would be if there is a timeline, the timeline, to put it out and to hire someone, and if you don't find someone, what happens to the team? So that's going to be part of your discussion.
We're having a discussion right now, and that's to Mr. Laurentino's point, that's legitimate topic of discussion without getting into actual underlying.
Well, that's why I just wanted to know, because, you know, putting it close and, well, we don't, in other words, through the chair, sorry. This decision to bring it back up would be next month.
Correct.
So.
Would we have another?
October, when is our next board meeting in November?
Thirteenth.
Eleventh.
Eleventh and thirteenth.
Thirteenth is the action.
On thirteenth.
Okay, so there's your answer.
Would or could we have a special meeting after, for the discussion?
He's got to be Rice.
No, I understand that, but would there be a sooner date because of the timeframe?
Yeah.
So if he's not Rice, we can't talk about time?
No, right.
Can we talk about the mechanics that you're talking about deadlines and things of that sort you can talk about? But to talk about the underlying, no, then you can't. You'd have to have a special meeting or wait for the next meeting.
I mean, don't, this is not written in stone, because of course it's not my, my position, but my understanding, it's usually tryouts are the week of, the week before, the week of Thanksgiving, so that's November eighteenth. We wouldn't be voting till November thirteenth. So then that would be putting it into the paper and trying to interview to get someone in to, for tryouts.
Through the chair, when does this stipend date end? Would he be responsible for what you're saying as far as tryouts and whatnot? When, when would this stipend date start and when would the other one end?
The end of the season?
Whatever.
I, I would assume that it would be the first day of tryouts?
No, no, what you're saying is, not saying what's going to happen. If it goes down, now we have to put it in the paper, we have to do this, there's got to be tryouts. When would be the official end time for this? Would he be responsible for tryouts and stuff, or would that be on a new one if that was the way it was to go?
I'm not quite sure I understand. I'm not understanding your question.
I think, I think what she's saying is that the, the person who was given the stipend for last year's team, when does that stipen, what, what date does that end?
Our coaches are hired annually, so they.
Yeah, that ends.
At the end of the year, okay, thank you, I think that was.
Yeah, that ended.
That, yeah, that's done. Correct, it's every school year.
So then that would cover everything here.
No, it wouldn't, this, this is the new school year. So you're approving.
End of last year.
Right.
That was last year. This year, whomever is hired for any coaching position gets hired for this year, the beginning of the season. So logistically, timelines, you got it now?
Through the chair? Forget it, I, I take it out, just let's do it. I'm not playing this game.
You're withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, I'm not playing this game, just let's approve it.
You're withdrawing your motion?
Yeah.
You're withdrawing it too, Sylvia? Ms. Adorelli?
This is, you know, over.
All right, so the motion, all right, it's withdrawn.
But that's not, that's not right either.
It's the kid, because you're going to end up hurting kids.
It's the kid, that's exactly what it is. So.
It's, it's really up to you guys. Well, I'm, I'm abstaining from it, so I'm just, just telling you the logistics.
You just need to be careful too about the dialogue, because it could, because, because of identification of certain individuals.
You know, I'm not going to say no names, you know.
Can we still Rice the person and have a discussion after they're approved?
No.
You could Rice somebody.
Yeah, but that's a lot of the job.
It's a new point, I guess.
Yeah.
So I say we, through the chair, let's just move forward with this. Mike has withdrawn his.
Absolutely.
Motion to table. His motion to table.
Because withdrawn, right, so we're back to the original.
Motion to withdraw the motion?
No, he just, he just. He, he was the one that made the motion, he withdrew it.
Yeah.
Right, so it's back to the original motion, so with, with Mr. Laurentino and Ms. Borelli, to approve all items as stated in the agenda.
Okay. So are we back to, are we?
Back to this whole thing, if, yeah. Does there's any more discussion? No, we have a motion, second, any, any discussion?
Oh, is there any, any other discussion then? All right, so then we're going to roll call.
Yep. Mr. Aricello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes, yeah, I was thinking, yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Akamando?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes all, but I'm going to abstain from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine.
Say the numbers again?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, through, oh, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me do it this way, I'm going to say yes to eight. That's probably better. I'm going to say yes to eight, and then from twenty on. Is that better? Okay, so, did you get them?
Yeah, all those motions pass.
Okay, so. All right. No, I could have done that too. Okay, so, we're good there? All right. So now we're going to go to committee reports. Uh, budget and finance? Mr. Akamando, do you have any? Okay.
Me either.
Facilities, no report, negotiations, nothing? Okay. Policy?
No.
Okay, let's do liaison reports. Ms. Adorelli? Do you want to do one for BCSBA, NJASBA?
A bunch of us went to the workshop, the state school boards workshop, and the topic that was discussed was AI. And it was very interesting, and for those of you that don't want to accept it, just know it's here, learn what you can on it. It's, it's a very interesting world out there. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I just want to elaborate.
Go ahead.
Using them, when, when he was speaking about AI, it was just so informative to learn how much it could help you. You know, not only be negative, but just to help and clarify paperwork, and this not necessarily doing it for you. So for me, it was very interesting, because I don't use any of that in my field. So I thought it was, it's an interesting tool to have going forward and, or.
And if I can repeat back?
I'm sorry, the super shared his policy that he wrote for AI for the district as well, and he's, he was willing to give it away essentially, and have everyone look at it. So if we were interested in writing policy for AI going forward, and how the district can utilize it, and how students can use it, and setting guidelines, I think it would be worth at least taking a gander to see if it's something we want to implement for the district.
Yeah, I know Strauss Desme is also creating one, so it would be good to have multiple.
Yeah, yeah.
And for someone who doesn't, might not know, AI stands for artificial intelligence.
Thanks.
Just saying, there's a lot of people that.
Yes, I thought it was quite informative, and as, using it in the classroom, it's incredible what you can do in a classroom, like, you didn't know that. It's, it is amazing, and I myself have followed a few people on TikTok, and they have taught me so many different things, so it's, it's quite interesting. It's the way of the future. So that, yes, that was a very good meeting. Okay, um, education, educational foundation, Ms. Torbic? Nothing? Okay. Ms. Traverso's?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Liaison, township liaison, we haven't had a meeting. Do you have anything to share? That's not us. That's not us. PTO, PTA, I know.
Through the chair, I got.
Yes.
I got PTO, PTA.
Okay. Do you want to go first, Mr. Akamando?
Guess he's going first.
Oh, am I, am I not, I'm sorry.
You're not, I, I mean, I don't, it doesn't make a difference.
Paperclip, I'm sorry, can't see. All right, this is, okay, Smith School PTO updates. Smith School will have their first PTO meeting on Zoom on Tuesday, October first, which passed. They will vote on the budget and review the plan for the new year. They will also kick off a read-a-thon on October first. Students are invited to track their hours to win prizes for reading. They also have prizes and incentives for fundraising. Their first restaurant night will be at Mario's on, what was it, September twenty-sixth. Fall Fest is planned for Friday, October fourth. Picture Day is October twenty-fourth, and they're looking forward to a great year. Oh, wait. I'm sorry, I wrote, I read the wrong one.
Oh, wait, there's more.
Wait, what? Who's did you read?
I read the one from last month.
Oh, that's last month.
I'm sorry, my glasses are all messed up. Sorry, Ms. Li, thank, thank you. Good Lord. No, those are my C four. Okay, here we go, I'm sorry to miss Melissa here. Thank you to all of the families who attended our Fall Festival, they had a great time. They also kicked off their read-a-thon that will take place, kicked off the read-a-thon that will take place the month of October. Students have already read over three thousand minutes. Our next restaurant night is scheduled at Wendy's on Route forty-six for Wednesday, October sixteenth. Picture Day is October twenty-fourth, and look out for the Smith School trunk-or-treat car at the trunk-or-treat. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Jeez.
Do you want to be next? Ms. Adorelli?
Franklin School had their first PTO meeting last night. Their new president, Diana McCarthy, discussed new goals, including the PTO providing an event and/or purchase in each of the following categories on a quarterly basis. One, fun event for students, two, educational event for students, and three, contribution to better schools' classrooms. Also.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and now we're going to go to Long?
Yes.
Memorial? Mr. Versi?
LMS had their first meeting last night, preceded by their back-to-school night, which was on September twenty-sixth. During that time, our scholastic book fair was shared with the parents to shop, after a three-day event during the day, school day, for all students to purchase books and other supplies. All students were gifted with a smicker sticker and a pencil case provided by the PTO. A thank you goes out to all who volunteered to help make it a big success. Also, at back-to-school night, parents were able to stop by the PTO tables to meet the members and board, and executive board. Ongoing events include a spirit sale, which has many new designs for Saddle Brook Ware. Purchases can be ordered on the LMS website. The current fundraiser is David's Cookies and Cheesecake. All orders must be turned in by October twenty-first, and delivery will be before Thanksgiving. Two snack sales are planned, one for the winter, which will be popcorn and Gertrude Hawk in the spring. Picture Day is October twenty-first, trunk-or-treat is October twenty-fifth in the outside yard of Long School in the back. And Halloween class parties will be held on October thirty-first after the school parade. Pizza will be provided by PTO, with additional treats provided by class parents. LMS will be hosting a Heroes for Heroes event on Veterans Day. Lunch will be provided by the PTO for the guest veterans. More information will be following through Ms. Mansfield. The executive board invites all LMS PTO members to join their Facebook page and visit the LMS website to stay informed of upcoming events. The next PTO meeting will be on November twelfth. We all look forward to having an amazing school year.
Thank you. Okay, um, I do not have one for the middle school, middle school, high school. How about Washington School, Ms. Torbic? Nope? Okay. All right. Except for the hundredth anniversary, yes. Tomorrow. At five o'clock. Uh, okay, do we have any correspondence? Okay. Old business, anybody for old business? New business?
Yes, through the chair, I just want to thank our student representatives for staying here for two and a half hours.
Yes, so good.
You're greatly appreciated. I know it's, you've got lots to do, like everyone else, but it is really appreciated. Thank you all, those good children there.
Yes, thank you. Very nicely put. Anyone else? Okay, all right, then can I have a motion to close the meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 stop. I got to open it to you. Can I have a motion to open the meeting? Motion. Would anyone like to speak? No. Okay, can I have a motion to close the meeting? Okay, to the public, thank you. All right, so now I'm going to ask for a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening, we'll see you November eleventh, or, and we'll see you tomorrow.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween, yes.